Seven o'clock, we call the September eighth, twenty twenty five, select board meeting to order. Start with ledge of allegiance.
I'm glad that it speaks to America to follow, stand one nation under God, individual, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, any adjustments to the prepared agenda? Wait, nope. Yes, Jeff.
Question about candidates for the town meeting, is there, will be discussed maybe in a minute.
Well, we got, on the manager's report, we got a reminder, special town meeting, we can probably take it up there if that's all right. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just have, um, a request that you provide approval to me when I go to the MMA conference for voting for on behalf of the town of Arundel. So I'll bring that up as part of, under, under business.
Okay.
Keith, did you want to add the discussion about the, the solar farm?
We can, if you'd like, sure, do the solar.
Yeah, I think you wanted to talk us about that anyways, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's that, Dan, the solar farm?
Yeah, we all got an email about trying to participate in a solar farm. And I asked Keith if he was going to answer it, and he said, well, I was going to talk to you guys about it.
There it is.
Solar on earth.
We can get that, okay. Anything else?
Make a motion, we approve as amended?
All in favor? So be it. Public forums, anybody have an item or just something to discuss that's not on the agenda? Yes, Chief?
Hi, just want to give you some updates at the fire department. Uh, so you folks approved the SCBA compressor, that's in and operating. Uh, that was put in, I think, uh, about ten days ago. Uh, so that's a good addition. Our execution tools, which you approved, uh, through capital improvement, um, they, those should be in service within the week. We have, uh, in service from the manufacturer and the representative, uh, tomorrow night at seventeen hundred hours. The service vehicle, which, uh, again, approved through CIP, should arrive at Arundel Ford this week. And it's going to be outfitted with the plow setup. Um, then it's going to go for, uh, the light and radio package down to Southern Main Communications. So that should be in service, we're hoping by the end of the month. The, uh, old service car is going to be going to auction later on this month, similar to, um, some other, uh, equipment from Public Works. So it'll be placed out of service. Uh, just received an email later this afternoon about the pump or tanker. The chassis is in production, should can be, should be completed by the end of the month. Um, completion of the apparatus is now predicted for late, uh, February twenty twenty six. And, um, through the CIP process, we got a couple of new portable radios in. Um, one problem that we're running into at the station right now, we're doing some research on it, we had CMP there today. Uh, we've got some flickering of some lights, and we think it's secondary to the Plimo vent being a, uh, when they installed it, they put it in, uh, like a three-phase motor, we don't have three-phase. So we've got to figure out that problem. So.
Drawing down, it's been, it's been drawing at the, um.
Anytime it activates, it draws all the lights down. So, um, it was something that was missed, and I literally just picked up on it today. As, as we're sitting there, trying to troubleshoot between CMP, we've had the electrician there recently due to some other electrical issues. Um, I literally look at the graphic for the Plimo vent system, and it says three phases like across it. I'm like, well, this is probably our problem, guys. So, um, we're going to have to work with Plimo vent to get that adjusted, because I don't think we're going to get three phases down under code.
I don't think so either.
So it's an exhaust system re, uh, removal system. So it's the yellow pipes that you see hanging down from the ceiling to prevent exhaust peeing through the station and that type of stuff. So when they put it in, you got missed, I guess, that they put in a three-phase motor. So. That, that, that makes the lights flicker a little bit.
So they've been flickering for a long time?
Uh, yeah, and we just, uh, we had some other electrical issues, and then it just came up.
You realize firefighters, they don't look at that stuff very often.
Initially, it was, they hooked it up wrong, the electrician, someone hooked it up wrong. I can't remember if it was the Plimo vent people, or electrician, they hooked it up to the motor wrong, blew the motor right off the bat. They covered it under warranty, they rewired it. Um, and then we've been having this issue, and I just thought it was a draw, and then come to find out it's a three-phase motor.
So.
So I got missed.
What's, what's the mileage on the service car?
A hundred and eighty-two thousand. So I don't think we're going to add too much for it, but we'll see when it goes to auction.
You never know.
Right, we didn't think we were getting much money for that, uh, six-wheeler, but I ended up getting, what, four thousand bucks or something like that?
Believable.
So, um, yeah, we'll be pulling the lights and the radios out of that and pulling the graphics off in a couple of weeks.
What's the mileage, uh, on the vehicle that, uh, that we use here for the CEO?
Say it's about a hundred and thirty thousand, somewhere in there near thirty-five, maybe forty now.
We tried to, we were trying to utilize the old sheriff's vehicle, the one that got, uh, brought in last year. But that was, that had more problems than our current.
Correct, that was in bad, we sent that immediately.
Like, what, a hundred and forty thousand, but, uh, Josh looked it over, and he's like, it needs so much work, so, being the cops.
Yeah, we sent that directly to.
That went directly.
Yeah, went directly to auction.
So that's about all I have for an update of the fire department. Any questions for me?
To refer, thanks, Chief. Okay, approval of the minutes from August twenty-five and September third.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of August twenty-fifth and September third, yes, please.
Any further comments or corrections, anybody see? There are none? All in favor? So approved. We don't have any committee and board reports, so move on to the manager's report, beginning with the Days Mills Bridge closure.
Uh, yes, there was a, uh, meeting held last Wednesday in reference to, um, the bridge closure. At the, at the, uh, at the meeting, they provided, uh, the fact that the bridge would be closed as of September fifteenth. Um, it would go through until sometime in June of twenty twenty-six, uh, that's what they're anticipating. They were beginning the process of putting signage up for detours for folks to have knowledge of what was going on. And I did notice when I drove up thirty-five this weekend that there's one large sign on the Kennybunk end telling about the bridge closure coming up, but I didn't see anything on the Limerick Road end. So I think they're still in the process of putting their signs up. Um, I think there was, uh, according to Ben, there was some general discussion as to, um, what was going to occur, particularly with, um, with snow removal on that section of the road, even though it doesn't pertain to us per se. It may be on the, the Limerick Road, uh, on the Lyman Road end of, um, of thirty-five. As I understand, um, the contractor will be responsible for, for, um, cleaning the road, um, for snow removal in and around the bridge area. How far it goes up into Lyman, which would have directly affect our, our citizens, I'm not sure yet. Um, I don't know if Lyman comes down and makes a turn at Bittersweet and then goes back. I'm, I'm not sure, Tom, I don't know if you're.
No, they go beyond Bittersweet, they make their turn in Kennybunk and come back.
All right, well, they're not going to be able to do that.
Do that now, yeah.
So, so I'm not quite sure if they're going to come all the way down. I didn't, um, I'll talk to Ben again, but we didn't get into that detail. I do know that, um, Kennybunk will not plow. They're going to stop at the, at, um, uh, Days, Days Mill Road, the dead end at the top of the hill. They're going to turn there, and that section of road will be maintained by the contractor. Um, and I'm assuming that something similar is going to be on the other end, but I'm not sure yet. Um, so that, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I know that, um, some people are a little concerned that it's going to be closed for so long and, um, uh, in the method that they're doing it, but, um, uh, any, any, um, discussions with, uh, MDOT, uh, they've sort of, this is their plan, they're moving forward with, and, uh, they're going to institute the plan that they've, they've come accustomed to understanding. So, and that's what they put out to bid, so I guess that's where we, we stand at this point.
You, you don't have a list of where they're going to put the detour sign to?
I, I do have a list. Um, I thought I had it with me, it's probably in my, um, paraphernalia here, but there's a, yeah, it's a pretty extensive list. I will send it to you, I'll email it and send it to you. I gave it to, um, most of our employees, department heads, I believe, I think Ben got one, I don't know if, uh, if, uh, the chief got one yet, we'll make sure he gets one as well. And I know that the, uh, sheriff's officers, uh, department was represented at the meeting, so I'm sure they got a copy of it as well. Um, we can put that on the website, too, if that helps people in terms of understanding that. But I suspect that our natives will u- use Downing Road and/or, uh, go all the way up to Perkins Lane to make their turn on and come down Thompson and onto Curtis to, to get that way from thirty-five. So, um, that's not being advertised as, um, as a detour road at this point, either or of those.
Probably was like here.
I think so, too. Yeah, those roads are very dangerous and we can keep traffic to them.
The road's going to get pretty busy, and that's a, that's a.
It's very narrow and the roads are very, you know, it turns pretty odd there, so.
First experience, the signage, um, on Jackson's Corner is set back quite a ways, so the people making a turn.
Already turn.
It's, it's going to be too late for them to see that sign.
Okay.
The, uh, the gentleman who runs the variety store, the convenience store, is probably going to go nuts with people using it for turnaround. You ought to have something right at that light, I think, to let people know, don't turn left unless you live down there.
Right, right.
Just, I mean.
Yeah, because then they'd have to turn, um, what is it, Days Mills, that goes up to Lime up to one eleven, and that's a, that's got a ten-ton limit on the bridge up that way, so that's even going to be a challenge. Yeah. I think it, I think it's going to be pretty challenging for a while.
Yeah, no doubt.
Um, just, just to give you a reminder that obviously our, our, um, special town meeting will be coming up on, um, on our meeting on Monday, the twenty-second. Obviously, in the past, we've, we've run those special town meetings prior to our business meeting, so it will start promptly at seven. Um, I don't have, uh, much more, I, I know that the, uh, the, uh, the meeting has been posted, as well as the explanation sheet that I generally have, I'll have those as handouts here for, for folks if they need to, um, to see what they're obviously voting on and what's been approved. So, um, I, I guess we'll just have to wait to see how many folks show up and how many questions are asked.
And you're okay as moderator?
Oh, sure, that's not, yep. You had a question, Jeff, though? You just answered it. Oh, okay.
Finally, for me, obviously, um, with the rejection of the RSU twenty-one budget again, um, from what I understand, um, the finance committee will be meeting, uh, Thursday, September eleventh at four P M. Um, followed by a school board meeting on Monday, September fifteenth at six, uh, to schedule a, and then they're planning on a district budget meeting for Tuesday, September thirtieth at seven P M. Um, and then they're, they're hoping to have, obviously, they're going to, they want to coincide that all with the statewide elections on Tuesday, November fourth. So the plan will be to have paper ballots for the district voting, similar to what they did at the last, uh, meeting we had here. Because if they had to wait for, uh, digital ballots to go through the machine, it would have taken longer. And, you know, it, it just doesn't make sense to, to wait that long in order to have another twelve hours of, of people here voting, uh, people here manning our voting, which, um, which was outstanding as far as I'm concerned. When you ask, um, residents to be here for a twelve-hour period, and they were great about it, uh, to take care of our citizens, that was, uh, very amenable. And this way, we can do it with the November election, and it shouldn't, it should be fine, so.
Got to get definitely a much better turnout with this one.
Uh, I think so, and it'll give us a better, uh, better understanding of what be happening there. Uh, that's what I have on the list, Thursday at four, yep.
Nine eleven, four P M.
So the only, the only other question I had was, uh, from the, um, from, I guess she must be the, um, interim finance director from RSU twenty-one. She contacted me today and just wanted, i- if you look at the tax calculation sheet by town, on the second page at the bottom, they try to give a comparison as to what the town's assessed value for the, for the upcoming year is and what impact that will have on this, on the schools. So they'll be using our new value, and they'll be able to indicate to the taxpayer that, you know, his, their contribution will be four dollars and whatever change that will be for, um, for their impact on their tax bill. So, um, and that will appear on the bottom of their sheet. So it doesn't have anything to do with the calculations, it just provides to the voters particularly what, what impact they will have on them when they pay their bill.
So it has absolutely no impact whatsoever on what, what we will be paying them on a monthly basis?
Yes, it will. Uh, say that again?
I just, yes, it sounded like you said it would have no impact on what we're paying them on a monthly basis?
I'm not talking about the monthly, I'm talking about what it does, the impact it has on the, on the tax rate. So if you look at your tax bill, obviously, it's broken down in, in several categories.
Right.
And they just need that information, so they'll have, you know, our tax rate is eight dollars and twenty cents. What's the impact for schools, for the town, and for the county? And those, those will be laid out on there.
But does our, our new valuation mean that, because we value at a higher amount now, that changes the dollar? Will, we need to raise more money for the school? Because the more, the higher your valuation is, the less money you get from the state, right?
That's not, that's not true. What usually happens is that they take the last three-year average of state valuations by, by the state, the MDOE does. So they've already calculated that.
Okay, so.
That's done for this year.
That, that's what.
So we have no impact.
Next year.
Next year could impact us, but, but we have to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, um, Kennybunk Port's already gone up, and I believe Kennybunk has wrapped up their, uh, their reassessment, so there'll be a new value there. I was hoping to have that number tonight, but I did not have theirs. I had Kennybunk Ports and ours, but not Kennybunk yet.
The, the, that state MBOE assessed value is somewhat independent of our, what we consider assessed value, correct?
That is correct.
So, so even though our assessed value more than doubled, the MBOE value that's going to go into the three-year average next year is not, that's not going to double?
They get that from the Department of Revenue, they have a, they have a sheet that they do every year.
Okay, but what I'm, what I'm trying to address Dan's question, I, I, I think from what you and I talked about that you said that the, the assessed value that goes into the RSU cost allocation model is the state number, not the town's number?
That is, that is correct, they use a three-year average. So next year, they'll add our new value.
Oh, so they'll go add the new.
They'll add it as part of their average, so it will not be, to be, uh, totally to our value, but they'll use that as a.
It will affect us this year, but it will next year.
Correct.
Because this year has already been calculated.
Okay, and, and then I, the, the, what's in the payable warrant, the, the five forty-five eight oh three to paid to the RSU, that's based on the budget that was passed in July. July, but failed at validation.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay, um, and is Gwen Bedell the professional you spoke with at the RSU? You said the acting CFO?
I did, she, she, I didn't speak to her, she sent me an email today and I responded to it. She's the interim finance director. Yes.
I think it's Gwen Bedell.
Um, yep.
Okay.
Off that.
One, one other question I had about the, the, the validation process. Um, and Keith, if, if I should talk to you about this separately, that's fine. What entity determines our voting procedures, like how many days of early voting and, uh, absentee voting and all of that?
That's established by state statute, and it's through the town clerk's office. So the town clerk.
So Arundel have, we have no say over how many days of early voting there is?
Right, there's a, there's a certain statutory requirement, when it begins, when it ends, um, that you can, that you can vote without being at the polls on November.
And we, and we have no, no leeway to?
No.
Neither does Kennybunk, nor Kennybunk Port, they're all the states there, too.
Okay. Okay. Move on to, uh, business then, with respect to property located at map ten lots five and six. Um, what we want to discuss, proceeding with a survey, um, or, uh, road investigation with connection with the presented, uh, the presentation we got from Melissa Crockett last meeting.
Yeah, and if you, if you recall, um, the director asked us to consider doing a survey of that before they would entertain any thoughts about, uh, what they would be getting into. And then also the, um, what kind of status we have for, um, for entrance onto the, those lots. So I think, um, they were looking for some of that guidance. Now, in terms of the survey, um, very hard to determine, we have forty-two acres up there. Um, we have a, um, it looks like we had a deed that was provided to the town in, um, I want to say nineteen seventy, and then we had one that was, uh, one of the lots we've owned since nineteen hundred. So, um, you know, uh, the deed research, um, you know, tracking the, the size of that. So the survey crew, um, they're going to have a lot of work cut out for them to, to identify that. Now, trying to figure out what that cost would be, I, uh, uh, obviously, I'm speculating forty-two acres. I just had, um, my parents' property surveyed, um, with the, the survey and then establishing the pins and getting the mapping, and that cost me just over five thousand dollars. So I would say that forty-two acres were probably anywhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars, I would say. So, um, we have to make a determination whether or not we think it's prudent to go ahead and spend money to do that. And then in, in, in re, in respect to that, we'd also have to identify the access to those properties and how much of a legal right we have over that, and what it's going to take to maybe expand that right on those roads. So, um, there's a lot there.
That's the first question I think you got to get answered.
The road?
Access issue.
Okay.
That's, everything's going to be ting, tinge upon that. I don't want to spend any money on a survey. Um, nice to have, but that, that is going to be very expensive, I can tell you. Um, we got to find out what the access issue is, what the problems might be, what the solutions might be before we spend that kind of money. That's going to cost a little bit of money, but we ought to get a title attorney or somebody taking a look at that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, yeah, that's why I wanted to bring it up, because I didn't know where we, where, where we should start first. So the, the road is the most important.
Yeah, I mean, I think if access, we find an access is clear, then.
No sense, right?
Then, to me, we should move forward with the survey, because otherwise than that, what are we going to do? At some point in time, it's going to need to be surveyed unless we're going to hold on to it forever and not do anything with it.
If access is an issue, I mean, if we want to sell it, we can do that and give it to somebody who wants to live on forty-two acres, but only has a driveway getting in there.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good point, Tom, I agree with that.
Um, I, I may have paid for more than one survey in the past ten years, uh, twenty thousand is not going to do it. Is, is my guess, if, if you, we're talking about a piece of property that's owned since nineteen hundred, there's no telling how far back they have to go with deeds. Um, I, 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 I agree with Tom that, that determining access is critical to figure, to starting conversations about what we do with this prop, this property. Um, I, I, I don't want to just assume that we are, uh, already decided on the affordable housing project. Um, I, I think it's important that we keep our minds open about, uh, what is done with the property, what the value of it might be to taxpayers in, in total. Um, and, well, I just want to basically plant a flag there, that I, I don't want to presume that we're, we're doing, any, anything we're doing is for, um, that specific NGO and their specific program. I, I think it's important that we keep our minds open, uh, rather than just to move forward as if we've already decided to go with them.
But it still hinges on access.
Yeah.
We can have that discussion after we figure out the access.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, we'll work on that then. Thank you.
Okay, next item is a liquor license, catering approval for Vinegar Hill Music Theater. We've got the applications, or the application.
Yearly rental, all right?
Make a motion, we have a license with the, with the theater.
I'll second.
Motion to main second, anybody have any questions, concerns, issues?
Go ahead, Jim. Not, not a concern at all, I just, uh, it, it, am I reading this right? That, that they have over nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue from, I'm sorry, uh, hundred, almost two hundred thousand of revenue from beer, wine, and spirits? In a year, okay. It's just, it's more than I expected.
And they really don't sell food, they have their food trucks, they have their food, they just have a little, the little box area there in the back.
Motion to main second, any further discussions or questions? Nobody? All in favor then, approving the reapproval?
I'll send this down so you can sign it.
Second item is a liquor license catering approval permit for Bandit Hoard Brewing as relative to their involvement with the Arundel Conservation Trust, uh, Trail Fest, that.
Make a motion, we approve. Make a motion, we approve the liquor license catering approval for Banded Horn Brewing.
I'll second that.
Any questions or concerns, anybody? There are none? All in favor? So be it.
I'll send that down, too, is just right here. You just put your names in and I'll print them. Yep.
Can I ask a question about the warrants, the payable warrants? Velma, you mentioned a mortgage. There's a $160,000 payment to US Bank, but what is that?
This building.
It's the bond.
Yeah, and that's our bond for this building. I asked, that's how I know.
I didn't realize that we had borrowed for it.
Well, I wish we had that much extra money.
And that's, is that a monthly payment, a quarterly payment?
Yearly.
Annual.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's just the principal. We still own the interest. The total package is about $181,500 a year.
Okay, the next item is you're looking for authorization to vote?
Yes, I'll, I'll be going to the, I'm anticipating going to the MMA conference held in October, October 8th. And would appreciate if you folks give me the authorization to represent the town in any voting at their MMA annual meeting. If so, I have a document here that I've filled out and then just have you folks sign it, then I can return it to MMA, so they know that I'm a voting member.
Second.
Any questions? Anybody? All in favor then, of authorizing the town manager to vote at MMA conference? So be it.
You know, video is doing all the.
No idea. Are they?
Dan, you wanted to discuss the solar farm, is there?
Um, yeah, I can, I can shed a little light. From what we can gather on Friday of this week, a gentleman who represents Solar on Earth sent an email to both select board member Bassett and select board member Dubois and myself, wanting to come to one of your meetings to discuss the solar farm dollar credits that are available now that CMP is now turning these solar farms on. So they're looking for whether the town is interested in being part of this solar farm, state-regulated solar farm credit program that they have, which gives you a reduction in your CMP fees. I think they don't know that, that we have a, our own solar facility, and as a result of that, I'm not quite sure that this would be germane to any discussions that we have here in town, so. But it was sent to them. They both mentioned it to me tonight, and I thought maybe it was just good to at least have a quick discussion on it and decide what we wanna do.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense, and I just replied back to them, thanks, but we have, we generate our own electricity and what little we pay, we hope to take care of that with the fire station up.
That is correct.
You know, so we won't be paying nothing.
I, I, I would like the town manager to reach out to this Mr. Erickson and just tell him, tell him what we are already doing and see if, if there's any purpose for them to come visit. If, if, if this would be a, if this opportunity is irrelevant to Rundle, that's fine. But if there is some opportunity for us to get a credit of some kind, then let's look into it.
I was planning on at least responding and letting him know, and we'll see what his response is to us at that point.
Sounds fine. Okay, need approval of just a payable warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve payable warrants.
All in favor? Sold. Anything else prior to adjournment, folks?
One quick question. So Keith, they, so they put a, well, they, they put a, a weight limit on Downing Road, right?
Yes, 20, 22 tons.
Phil, isn't it less than that coming in from Kennebunk?
I drove that the other day, and I didn't see the sign coming in from Kennebunk, to be honest with you. So I don't know. I think, I think they were at 15 tons.
Yeah, I, I drove by the other day and I went by really quick. I'm like, wait a minute, I, I think this is less open that way than it is.
No, there's no, no, I, I, I've ridden it, and it's hard to see, Phil. You're absolutely correct. It's sort of, it's not on the corner. It's tucked down the road a little bit more. And it's hard to see, but it's 20, was it 21 or 22 ton? Yeah, right.
So it's the same on both sides?
Yeah, it is.
I, I, I thought it was.
But Phil got me curious because I thought maybe the 15-ton sign was there, but I can't find the 15-ton sign on that end.
That hasn't been there all along, at just short of.
Yeah, yeah, it, it hasn't been there very long. You're absolutely correct. Yeah, yeah.
Andy, refresh my memory. What, did, did you need 25 tons? Okay. Okay, but, but. But the, and it, it's the state that determines the weight limit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so is, is this something worth pursuing with our state rep or?
Well, we've had various people have already spoken to the state, and they're pretty adamant that they're not gonna change their mind at this particular point.
Even with the doubt, with the Daze Mills.
That is correct. Right, they did some test borings there. They've had their engineers and Alsa, and that's why they came up with the tonnage that they did. It wasn't an arbitrary decision as far as they were concerned that they made. They did some due diligence before they put that, that restriction on it. Correct, it's, yeah, the, the timing could have been worse for us in terms of what we're attempting to do here, so. It'd have been nice if they had gone ahead and fixed Downing Road before they did Daze Mills or vice versa. But with the limit, it sort of limits those larger equipment getting across, particularly our emergency vehicles.
And I'm sorry, but, Dan, anything else on Clearview Estates? Have we heard anything back yet on that? On what Leah was supposed to be doing and?
Not, not yet. I did have a, I did have a conversation with Mr. Emerson?
Yeah.
Yeah, I came to my office this week after we had taken down these signs. The signs had been removed. I haven't heard anything else other than that. I do know that I got a phone call from one of the representatives down there. Stella McCormick contacted me. I have to, I owe her a phone call. She wants to come in and discuss the Clearview subdivision regulations and what was, and what, what was approved and what kind of teeth that that subdivision regulations have. And I've sort of tried to hold off before I make that call because our land use administrator, Anne's been on, on vacation, so Anne can grab that information for them to readily sit down and take a look at if they so desire. I don't think it's something that we should be commenting on. They certainly can take a look at this information and come to their own determinations as to what that information says to them. So that's sort of why I've waited at this point.
Anything else, anybody?
Make a motion to adjourn at 7:39 PM.
All in favor? You are done.
Okay.